Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. But everybody here, I'm in the pledge and allegiance place. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Who called, Mr. Dawson?
Mayor Laporte.
Here.
Trusty Connor has been excused. Trusty Barker?
Here.
Trusty Garrett?
Here.
Trusty Poyer?
Here.
Superintendent Dillan.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Barcom?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. I believe all the board members have a copy of our previous board minutes. Would there be any corrections or additions to this board minutes?
If I could, I'd just like to add something into, you know, last month we said something, Trusty Barker asked for the minutes to be appointed, and we talked about this earlier. If I could just add, add it in this month, that minutes, our board minutes are not predemned. You know, we don't make actual, every word of our minutes, like we talked about.
Right.
And then just that they're edited by the clerk treasurer.
Deputy Clerk.
Deputy Clerk, probably.
This is the writer of the minutes.
That's the writer of the minutes.
That's the writer of the minutes.
Good enough. Did I make a motion to pass the minutes?
Second. All in favor?
I'd be sure.
Aye. Motion carried. Can we do that?
I want to be sure that I know what Paul, this is something you want added to the minutes that you just stated?
Yeah, just, you know, last month we added that I wanted the minutes within two weeks, and then this month if we could just add in that if the minutes are, you know, predemned, we're not exactly as we say.
Verbatim.
Verbatim. And that they're just edited by the deputy clerk?
That's it.
So in other words, they're not technically official, official, it's an edit, gives us a summary of what we've talked about.
Yeah, yeah, it gives us a summary. Right, it's a summary of what?
It's not verbatim, meaning that it's whatever's written.
What, yeah, you know, because if a motion is made, say, by Trusty Barker, on a, on a, just as made, a discussion to follow.
Right, we don't put every single word in it.
Right.
That's all I just wanted stated in there, that we don't put every single word that's said in the board minutes.
That's, that's all. So he made the motion to pass the minutes, second by Rainey, and we took the vote. We were all in favor. Thank you. Is there anyone out in the audience who would like to address the board at this time?
No one there.
Okay, we'll move on to reported mayor. I'd like to take this time to thank our BPW crew on the superb job that has been done on the Pine Street gully. If anybody has gone through and looked at that, that is, is, I'm impressed with that. That's a very, very well-accomplished piece of work, and they should be recommended for that. And I, and I, and I want to say at this time, for health issues, I haven't really been into this as much as I should be, but I'm hoping as time goes on and it gets better, I will do better. And that's it for my report. On to report of Trusty Barker.
Okay, I'd like to follow the mayor, and also thank our, our work crew for an excellent job on Pine Street. The gully cleanup over there is just, I mean, finally taxpayers can drive through there and see that we've really accomplished a lot. Joe, we still have some items to finish over there. We were talking about planting some type of vegetation along there to keep the dirt from draining back into our drainage and throwing it back up.
We'll have some sort of a ground cover that's maintenance-free. Have to work it out this week.
Right, and we're still working on the sewer extensions to get it up out of the gully because it's-
We have the manhole cover.
Manhole covers.
Put on the new flat top and drainage for that newly-discovered manhole.
Right, right. Is everybody aware of what happened with that situation? So, you know what, it was a good situation. We finally dealt with it, and, and we got it resolved, and I think the cost of getting it resolved was just minimal. And it's finally great, you know, that we dealt with one of our problems, we got it resolved, and it's, it's just good news all the way around. Once again, thanks to work crew, they did a fantastic job over there. We're still working up further up on the other side of ICE.com. I've been talking to the residents up there, trying to keep them informed on what we're doing with that new drainage system for the, well, I hate calling it Garsel Lake because it's people's backyards. It's just, there's no way to other refer to it, so, but I've been in contact with them. We're currently waiting to schedule the contractor to get in there.
The material's on order.
Materials on order.
Once they're here, we'll start the work.
So that should be happening shortly.
I expect materials by late this week.
By the next board meeting, we should have some progress up there. That'd be great to have that whole situation taken care of. That's good news, that's good news. Deputy Commissioner Buildings, I've, I've been keeping in touch with the residents up on Oak Street, according about that burnt-out building that we have up there. We have some good news for them. Apparently, somebody is willing to purchase the property. They're talking about remodeling the property, which would be even better than tearing it down and leaving it a vacant lot, you know. So that's good news. I've been trying to keep in touch with them and let them know what we're doing and what's going on with that, so that's good news. Church Street, the old Papinell Building, I don't know if anybody's noticed, it's now up for sale. We've been keeping track of that. Joe's just recently sent him a letter, and it's in our correspondence this evening. It will be letter number one. He still has 30 days. I think there's about 10 or 15 left in what he's got to do as far as securing that building.
And he's still agreed to that.
So that's, that's coming up shortly, so that'll be, that'll be good news. Oak Street, the other buildings up there with the lawn maintenance, finally, that's, that seems to be staying intact. It's, it's looking good up there. Street Commissioner, of course, you know, everybody's been working on Pine Street, and we've been trying to take care of that issue. Next year, we're gonna have to put up for bids our streets. We're gonna have to figure out what we want to do on our streets and, and put them out for bid and try to take the lowest price. That's the only way we're willing to accomplish what we want. We're currently checking to see if we can use our state funds as far as doing patching. We're not quite sure if we can do it for patching, so if we can cut out around manhole covers, fill them in, attach them, repair them, get them ready for paving.
Using the CHIPS money that we do?
The CHIPS money. We're not sure. We're, we're in the process of checking that out, so that's where we're at with that.
Should have an update before the end of the week.
Good, good, because if we can, we'd still like to get some patches in. We're, I mean, I don't see us paving any more streets this year. We're just falling late to the season. We've been taking care of other issues. We've got winters coming up. We've gotta get ready for snow and the whole one. The other thing we got to discuss, it will be an executive session tonight. Pretty excited about this. We've got a new hire that we're gonna review this evening. This is great news for the village taxpayers. We're gonna bring in a new, new person into our group. We really need it. We've, we've been shorthanded, and this additional person is really gonna make a big difference on how we do things around here. That one extra guy is just gonna, it's really gonna help out, help our work crews out, so we're looking forward tonight to reviewing our applicants and, and discussing and deciding on what we're gonna do with that. Last month, we had talked about some insurance revisions that, I think of 2004, Trusty Poyer was talking about them. And there was a thank you to Superintendent Webb from Trusty Poyer for the two vehicles that were removed off our insurance policy. I believe one was a 1977 Chevrolet and a 1992 Chevy Caprice. I believe one was a police vehicle and, and one was-
I'm not sure what the other.
What the other vehicle was.
I never saw them.
That whole thank you was for removing those, those two items from our policy, which we had been insuring up to this point. And I'm not even sure if we've owned them for the last five years. Also, while reviewing our insurance policy, I see here we've got the Ford 350 service van. That is now, as I understand, it's done.
Didn't need a serious repair work, over $2,500 to $3,000 worth of repair work. And I think I spoke two board meetings ago that we were looking for something else.
Right. Maybe we should, let's go ahead and get that off our insurance policy if we could.
Well, I didn't want to take it off yet, because if I have to transport it, I still want it covered. If I have to move it somewhere, I didn't want to take the risk of moving the vehicle without insurance.
No, that vehicle could sit there for months. I mean, if we got rid of it, have somebody pick it up and-
With our insurance coverage that we have, if anybody's aware, would they actually cause us to check for the difference?
I guess I could ask them, it just gives us pure liability for it, and just for the meantime, until we sell it.
I don't know what our insurance coverage is on that.
Does it change, does it change the rate?
I'm sure what, I mean-
It's my understanding that the village's vehicles are all under a fleet policy. So taking off or putting on one vehicle, we put the tractor on or the tractor.
Right.
Did not change the policy at all.
It fell under the same fleet.
So it's a fleet package we pay, we don't pay by vehicle through this company.
So maybe if-
So it doesn't really seem like a major concern? If it's not, I don't really, the only thing I'm worried about is cost, let's not insure anything we're not using.
And it may be easier if a replaced vehicle comes along, say, we're taking this off, switch it to this one.
Right.
Rather than say, generate a new one.
Right, right.
You know what I mean?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're not insuring anything that we're currently not. I guess, insurance bids, have we put those out for bid yet?
Just announced.
And then the phone system that we talked about last month, Trusty Poyer's gonna address that situation. It is a situation. And also, I'd like to say congrats to Donna Barcom for your achievement, for the records retention scheduling.
Thank you.
That's, that's good. Did you attend this meeting, or was this something I did?
Yes, it's at the town hall.
Right, okay. Phone system, Rainey, okay. We have PrimeLink currently. We get Time Warner cable for free. Is there any reason why we can't switch over to Time Warner?
Nothing.
We'd be $2,500 a month for PrimeLink, and according to our contract with Time Warner, they'll provide us with free service.
For a website?
For a website. I wonder if maybe we could look into it?
Sure.
Just, just look into it. It's, it's not much of a savings, but hey, every penny counts and it saves.
Doesn't Time Warner give us a security system at the home?
I believe so, as well.
Alarms and-
At the water plant.
At the water plant.
Maybe just something to check out.
Sure.
Permit fees. When we get our permit fees and we get, like, bingo funds once a week or something like that, what account does that, does that go into our general funds?
It's into a trust and agency account, and 40% of it is put back into the general fund.
And what about the, why I've noticed why it has upgraded their sludge three months to now twice a month?
Uh huh.
Now, does that, will that go back into our sewer fund?
Yes.
It does go back into our sewer fund?
Uh huh. We have, we've allotted so much as revenue in that sewer account for that, and we are below, so it's not going to be a surplus when we need anything.
Right, right. It almost covers the cost of what it costs us to get rid of that.
No, I'm saying, no, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that because they are bringing it twice a month now rather than once a month, it doesn't mean that we're going to have additional revenue in that account at the end of the year, because we're running behind what we want to just-
Okay. The other, other thing I've got is executive session, personnel issue. I'd like to talk about our new hire and an insurance issue. And that's it for me. Thank you very much, Trusty Barker. Trusty Garrett?
Like, like everyone know that we are going to have a Halloween party costume contest on October 30th at 11:00 a.m. at St. Mary's Academy. We will have different categories of, for ages, first of all, so we'll have little kids, medium kids, older kids, and up to big kids if they want to enter. And each category will have different contests within for most original costumes. We're looking for homemade costumes, as well as, you know, the great store-bought ones. There are some good ones out there, but looking for originality. And we'll have a little parade within the gym. We probably will not walk around the block unless it's a gorgeous day, like they used to do in the past. But each age group will have their time to shine, and we will have refreshments, hopefully all donated, so this won't cost us anything. So that'll be at 11:00 a.m. on October 30th.
An all-age group?
All-age groups, yep. From, all through high school, as long as you're willing to enter. I think it'd be fun, have different groups. And that's all I have, 'cause he's already covered the executive session for my personnel stuff, and that's it.
Okay, I want to thank you, everyone. Trusty Poyer?
Also, I'd like to follow up where Albert said with the Pine Street situation. I want to give thanks to our Public Works crew. I stopped by there and checked it out, spoke with some of the neighbors. They were all very impressed. They were all happy. I guess the proceedings that started from the sinkhole right to the cleanup of the gully, everything went well. Major cost savings because of the way it landed. Little extra work probably in that gully area, but I think it was well worth it with the results that we got. So I'd like to say bravo to our Public Works crew and anybody who worked on that. Also, congratulations to Donna. I noticed the certificate in there for a course that was passed and the whole thing. I'm kinda like Amy, I don't have a lot. I've been swamped all this month, since our last board meeting, but the phone issue, which I tackled very aggressively last month, figuring that it was a problem, and there is a problem. What I've done is tried not just Amy's donated answering machine, I purchased several other new ones, and obviously returned them. I mean, they don't work, they don't work. Having several meetings with the phone company, the technicians from the phone company, the results came back as the system we have here is probably the only one left in existence in the Village Champlain. Apparently, it's a good system in its day, it was a good system, and obviously it's still working. The downfall to it, you cannot take a regular phone and plug it in here. It has to receive the special pulses that this thing puts out. The answering machine, obviously the same way, one line, two line, 10 line, doesn't matter, it has to match this system. In order to get something to match this system, you've gotta go back to the manufacturer of that system. So at this time, I'd like to, and I'm not sure if that works without Chuck being present tonight, but I think we're falling back to the same thing that we talked about back in January, that we've all been kinda gritting our teeth on, is a new phone system. When Joe did it, there was a payback cost of three years. Does that number still stand, Joe?
Yes, I understand the equipment may be less expensive today than it was back in January.
Less expensive?
Yes, okay. But I'd have to check.
And I see you've got a purchase requisition here. Is that from our discussion?
That's from January.
This is from Janus.
That was copied from because of-
Thank you.
Also, one of the problems with that phone system is that we don't even know if that company exists anymore. I mean, we could be-
According, according to the phone company, the technician I spoke with, he doesn't know if it even exists anymore. You're right. He said if something went down with this system, we'd be without service because there's no part availability to fix it. We'd have to upgrade anyways. So I guess, in due light of the couple issues we had that brought us to the answering machine system as a temporary fix to, to ail the situation, it's not gonna work. It's, and if this system goes down, why put ourselves in a situation of taking one, two, three days to overnight something in here that will work? So at this time, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, if it'll help the board also, we did have another emergency since our last board meeting.
I heard something about-
With our sewer line break.
The trailer park water?
Right. With no way to contact the village once again. Water shooting in the air, people running around, no way to call anybody, nowhere to get hold of anybody.
I gotta call them in my office, and I was out of talent that time.
It's, I mean, I know we don't really have the funds for this, but I think it's really time to address this issue and kinda with the-
Maybe Janus can help us on this. This, this dollar amount of $3,225, is this, I know it's something, didn't we talk about this in our budget? Did we?
No.
We didn't put anything, but we talked, did we, or was that after the fact? I don't remember. Do we have funds? I mean, I know it's a three-year payback, which doesn't mean anything in the initial purchase. How is the best way to handle? What I'm looking to do is make a motion on this, but I don't wanna put a make a motion if we don't have any money to pay for it.
Well, you'd have to transfer some money on your fund balance if you chose to get it in more than, it's not a budgeted item.
I think that we should, we should wait until we're close to the end of our budget to see if we have the money for such an extraordinary expense. I mean, if we get, what is it, $6 a month for, to get voicemail?
Something else happened after. Joe, I don't know if you want to discuss it with-
Well, the technician was in here, and he said if you hook up the answering machine maybe to the trunk line before it ever comes into the closet, you may be able to make the answering machine work.
He said that-
He told me about that, too.
And that was what Joe was saying to me last month for the $75. Joe wants to sell it. For the $75, they can wire this in prior to going into the system and it'll work.
Into the main trunking before it hits that thing?
Yep. So we could put an answering machine on there.
Monitor whatever deal is.
It sounded like it would be, it could be any answering machine. It didn't have to be the one coming in the manufacturer.
No, exactly. No, I, I talked with him in life, trust me. He was getting antsy because I was using a lot of his time looking for a way to do this, and he did say that. However, if something malfunctioned in this answering machine, put all the phones out because you're on the main harness coming in, what are the odds of that? I don't know. You know, I'm not into answering machines and electronics to that extent. I mean, it's-
Yeah, and our phone just rang. Here it is, 507. Our phones are ringing in the office, so, I mean, if we weren't here just to pick up that telephone, we wouldn't know. I mean, I don't know.
Oh, the phone just ringing now?
Yeah, if it was the wrong number or what, but I mean, these are, we've gotta have a way for people to contact us. We just somehow-
I mean, I guess we can put this off and see how much the numbers are, but what, I mean, every municipality that I know of has it.
Well, because we've been spending a lot of mon, you know, we've had a lot of things come up.
We just allocated Joe $10,000 to deal with the Pine Street issue.
That we didn't have.
That we didn't have, and it turned out it didn't cost us $20 a scratch on that. So I mean, if we had that money to deal with that-
That was considered an emergency.
Yeah.
Well, what about the voicemail?
Well, I think our phone situation is almost an emergency situation.
Well, you can get a voicemail for $6 a month. We can solve it first thing in mind, or they can activate it, turn it on immediately. It's a voicemail that'll list all our emergency things. You can get messages off, just like an answering machine, but we're paying a monthly service to Band-Aid us until we're sure we have the funds in case another emergency doesn't come up with another expenditure that we need the money desperately for. Because we're not desperate, we're not at the point that we've gotta have a new phone system. The phone system works, they pick up, they can page somebody.
The whole point is that I see, I mean, this is the way I look at things, is let's not wait until we're so desperate we have to do something. We should be able to make educated decisions into the future. That's what we're here for. Taking us into the future, making logical, educated decisions like this or similar to this. This is a proven system.
If we had the money, yeah. I mean, if we had budgeted for this, it'd be no question, it'd be easy, it'd be a simple decision to make. There's no question we need to get out of the 17th century with our phones. But they're working, and a simple solution for the moment is a lot cheaper, and we're not going to have to, you know, go to taxpayers come March and say, gee, we're really short on money because we've had this happen, this happen, and this happen. And people are gonna say, well, you just, you know, spent $4,000 on a phone system. I'd like a new phone system in my house, too, but, you know, we wait until you have to do it.
So it'd be similar to like the van that we have out back? Now we're in a situation, because we have an upgraded or fixed oil leaks or whatever, we have nothing. So now we're in a situation where we have to spend the money, whether we have it or not. I know we didn't budget for a van.
Right.
Right?
So there's an expense right there that we have to address.
So which is more cost savings, planning ahead or just doing this emergency stuff? You see my point? I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm trying to, I don't, I don't see things that way. I try to plan for it. It might sting right now, but what are the, what are the gains to it? You see what I'm saying? I know we had a major gain on paving the roads. I know we had a major gain on Pine Street. I know we've had, I can list major gains on telemetry. These are hours I've spent, time that I've spent.
But are, are we having any problems with our telephone?
Do you have, just have repair people at your telephone?
Does your phone either ring though?
Twice in the last two weeks.
Twice in the last two weeks you've had your phone repaired or worked on or looked at?
Or the phone system, their line went dead.
He fixed that today.
Yeah, it's, it's a-
The last visit I made here was the end of last week. It was at night, it's the only chance I had, and I was using my cellphone to call here, and Joe's phone wouldn't ring at all. And I'm saying, my God, what's happened now? And then the next day, I think Joe said, well, no, that's, another problem has been there for three days. And I said, well, great, there's nothing I did.
Yeah, it went out Saturday, I don't know why, but I called them then, and they came in today.
And see, there's another issue. We just, last month I thanked you, or was it the month before? I just got done thanking you for the $10,000 savings on their backhoe. Our backhoe is completely upgraded and outfitted to the $10,000, that didn't cost us a penny. There was also, by changing the hours at the wastewater treatment plant, there was another $5,000 in savings. I mean, if we have all the savings coming in and we're, and we're cutting and taking your-
But we bought a new backhoe on top of it.
That's right. Because, you know why? Because of the-
Because of that one was, you know, not fixed properly.
Because we didn't plan to put one in place. You see what I'm saying?
But you also didn't have $10,000 budgeted for the repair of the other one, so in reality, you're not ahead $10,000.
Because we didn't have it.
You didn't budget $10,000 to repair it.
Yeah, we didn't have the money. That was the problem that we were in, either we had to do something.
Right.
Which we went, and we borrowed, we're like, no one.
And the $10,000 for the gully, that was not money that was budgeted either, because we have the same time back here.
Right, it was an emergency set.
It's not money that we actually have.
That gully was going on for how many years? I think you said last year.
At least 10 years.
Okay, so, so we have to do an emergency thing again, even though we knew about it 10 years. This is my point. How long are we gonna go with this phone system before we say, oh, here we go again, we're stuck? We shouldn't always have to be stuck.
Till next March, budget season, we put it in our budget.
I think if our, I think if our voicemail will get us through what we need right now, and then sit right down with a nail prices, okay, and I'm sure that the longer that we go, it's like a computer. You pay two thousand for a computer today, six months, you'll pay fifteen hundred for it. And you, you have to agree with me on that.
Oh, I know, sure.
So, I'm saying, you know, let's, uh, let's do, uh...
We'll keep paying, paying the repairs every time a phone goes down. Maybe we'll have none, but maybe...
They're not charged.
Well, I'll ask the phone company if they're willing to go into a repayment plan or something, maybe. We don't have to put the old chunk out. Maybe that's something to look at.
Well, it's, it's obvious we can't spend this money. I mean, nobody seems to want to upgrade or look into the future, so I figured I'd make a motion, but if it's not going to go, it's not going to go. The only way this could go, that I can see right now, is if I said, "Is it okay if I come in and do it for free and I pay for it?" Then they, then there might even still be a little static, but that's okay. I'm not even going to offer that. I've offered and offered, and I've done what I could. I do what I can to look into the future and make things better, whether it's equipment, roads, you know, office, whatever.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think anybody's questioning that, right?
No, I understand that.
But I'm thinking, you know, maybe...
I just feel that we're putting it into a budget and it'd be part of what we planned for.
It isn't like we're not doing anything. We're at least doing something.
We had this conversation in January, I think.
Well, we started, yeah, it started when I got here.
Before these, these emergency calls come in that nobody answers, or like you said, the phone just rang now. I don't know what the importance of it was, but it doesn't matter. Any taxpayer who's, who's paying their way through this village should be able to call and get somebody on the other end or know where to reach somebody from the other end. Whether it be a, whether it be an answering machine, whether it be voicemail, there has to be something.
We could put that into place where, put a couple of emergency contact numbers. When they dial the village, the machine picks it up and says, "Okay, you know, for an emergency, these will be your emergency call numbers." I'm sure that can all be set up on that.
All typed up, it's ready to go.
You know what I'm saying? And, and we can do that for now, and let's see how that works. I think maybe the system needs to be upgraded as well. I think we need to do a lot of phone systems with the, with the wastewater, and we need to do it all. But I think when we do it all, if we're going to do it, we should do it...
This is all.
Completely.
This, this takes care of the pump house, the wastewater treatment plant, all of it comes here first.
Yeah.
And if you want to talk to wastewater treatment plant, you push a button and it goes directly down there.
Right.
That's what this is.
Okay. Well, we've had six water main breaks in the last six months around. So, there's six emergencies. One day, one of these emergencies is going to cost us the three thousand dollars.
Or maybe more.
In life, or maybe more.
Or maybe more.
So, I mean, we keep, like you said, we've got to do something.
No, I mean, I, I mean, you know, there's, it sounds like you and I are on one side and you're, and that's okay. I'm not here to win something over. I just want everybody to understand where I'm coming from. We can't wait for emergencies every time we go to make a decision. Decision process is designed for making decisions into the future, not on an emergency basis every single time. And we're always going to be in an emergency situation every time if we don't ever make decisions into the future. That, that's the way it is. This is going to cost, like Paul said, this, this upgraded phone could cost us more than that lawsuit. Or, or who knows? I mean, the liability is, is tremendous.
And then we do have a payback on the system. It's not like the system is going to, it's, I mean, I understand we don't have the money right now, but there's a three-year payback. So, eventually, the system will pay for itself. You know, that, that's the good thing about it. It's just not, we're investing this three thousand dollars and we're getting nothing in return. There's no savings. We're getting substantial savings. We will get all our money back, and we just have to come up with the initial funds to start the process. I mean, we're going to, eventually, we're going to have to do this anyways. I think what Rainey's saying is, let's, we've got the issue, let's, like the Pine Street issue. That issue sat there for ten years. Well, finally, the people brought it to our, you know, our notice, and we took care of it. We dealt with it. We sat right there in front of them and said, "Okay, we're going to deal with this issue tonight. We're going to solve the problem." So, and I understand what you're saying about cost savings, but, I mean, down the road, we're going to have to start thinking ahead a little bit more than, you know, than what we're doing now. We can't keep putting Band-Aids and...
And that's what we're talking, we're talking about looking down the road in budgeting. People who do not have money cannot go out and just spend it because they want it, because it's better. We are people that don't have money, and you can't spend it when you don't have it. So, if you plan for it and you budget it in, then you can get it. But we have not budgeted or planned for it, so we should put this on the top of our March agenda and budget that this phone service will be put into our budget for...
And we will have our upgrading next year.
In June.
Yeah.
We will have our upgrading.
And it's, it will be done and will be put. In the meantime, we'll pay six dollars a month.
Where'd you get the six?
Salt cost.
Yeah, but where'd you get it? You know, but you see my point? It's the same thing you're saying. If you want to stress it, then be factual at all.
All right, if you want arguing thirty-six dollars versus thirty-six hundred dollars, okay, taxpayers out there, do you want thirty-six dollars bet or thirty-six hundred?
I think they just want to talk or get an answer or a number. That's all they're looking for. Rather than pay the six dollars a month, I'd be willing to tap into the main trunking line ahead of that and put a regular answering machine in and save your six dollars a month.
But you say it could mess up the phone system. Why would we want to mess up the phone system when we're not having issues?
That's what was told to me. If the answering machine that we have, say yours, is an older unit, something shorts out, power surge or whatever, it could shut the system down. No different what we have right now. If that thing burns out, we're done. We have no phones. So, it's the same, it's the same risk. It's just not a good risk to have. The newer systems don't have that risk. You can plug a regular phone into it. You can, see what I'm saying? There's, there's risks.
There's no question, there's no question we need it.
There's a risk if we don't do anything, first of all, to the system we have. There's a risk. And if we tap in ahead of it, of course, it's a risk. No different than the risk we have existing. What I'm saying is, if, if you're highly stressed on thirty-eight hundred to six thousand a month, what do you choose? Well, the issue is, we don't have the thirty-eight hundred, and where do we get the six?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Let's not even do the six. We'll take, keep our risk going and tap in ahead of it. You see what I'm saying? No, it's just, if we're going to be one track, let's stay on the same track. I make a motion that I donate my time to tap into the main harness before the trunking system that we have with an answering machine. If not Amy's, maybe a new one. If yours doesn't seem to work, I don't, we've got the manual on it now.
Can you do that? You have to have someone from the telephone company.
No, I've talked to him, like I said, in length, and, and he doesn't, he doesn't, they don't care. Once it's inside of the building, it's your baby. That's why I'm surprised they... Joe, you said they're not charging us every time they come out?
Yeah, they don't charge us.
They haven't charged us?
No.
They haven't charged us yet, or they just never have? They don't. But they will for the seventy-five dollars to hook the machine up?
As I mentioned last month, yes, it will be, to bypass that, that would be seventy-five dollars.
Because it involves rewiring and so forth.
That we presently have.
But fixing what we presently have, they don't...
Basically, all, it's a simple fix. I can fix it. I have him showing me what to do. And it's just a matter of taking, unplugging it, plugging it back in.
He, he did say he corrected it today or something.
Yeah.
He shouldn't have to.
Okay. So, I make a motion? Anybody second it, or better idea?
Well, you know, you've been, you donate a lot, so I mean...
Well, I don't mind that. Whatever it takes to move forward, I'm looking, you know, we've got a truck issue that we've got to cross also. You know, how am I going to pull this off? I don't know. I'm going to do the best that I can to get the best deal for this village and the whole thing. The sad part is when I sit here and people look at me like, "You don't know anything. You're ridiculous." Well, and I know you don't mean that, okay? I run a business myself. You're educated. You, you know what real world is. Paul, you ran a business. Albert, you ran a fire department. We all know this stuff. We have to come to reality sooner or later and stop putting Band-Aids. We're never going to get ahead with Band-Aids because we're always going to be going back fixing the Band-Aids. This Pine Street gully, there's no Band-Aid there. That's a perfect job. And we're still ahead of what, the money that we didn't have to spend, but the problem's fixed. You know what I mean? And that's the way to do it.
I'm hard with you all. I totally agree with you.
It's, that's the way to do it.
But I just don't feel that we have the money to do this.
I don't think, I, I think...
It's not an emergency expense right now.
I think we believe everybody sitting here thinks we need an upgraded answering system.
There's no question, we need new system.
It's not that we don't.
They've got to be able to call and talk to something or somebody. I'm just saying, rather than put a Band-Aider, this or that, let's do it and get it over with. But if, if we just want to budget it, and that's a good thing, that's nothing wrong with it. It's the right way of doing it.
That's where it's earmarked for, I think.
Then let's do that. Meanwhile, rather than pay the six dollars a month, let's save that six bucks a little bit that it is and then put it towards our new budget year and, and whatever. I mean, my salary covers that. This is my second year. You, you know what I mean? There's money somewheres. I know it wasn't budgeted, but, and I'm more than happy to do this, but...
Well, maybe come month, March, you know, we're going to have the manual, be able to get it three months earlier than, and we won't even need to put it in next month's budget. Maybe something, you know, will be short enough to be able to take that money and get it.
We haven't saved enough yet, is what you're saying.
Right, right. You know, just, we're squeezing, and if everything keeps happening, I'm so afraid of another emergency. That's my...
If it needs to be in, do we have the money to put it in? And that's, and that's, that's my, that's my thing when it comes to the taxpayer. If we have the money to put it in, let's put it in. If we're not sure that we have the money, then I have a problem with it because then I don't want to go back to them and say, "My," you know, "we didn't have the money, so you ain't going to get this," or "I'm going to jack your taxes a dollar a thousand like here." You know what I'm saying?
Oh, exactly.
So, yes, we need it, but I think we, there's a way that we need to get it in there, and that's my own thing. But if, if Mrs. Dawson says to me, "Boy, I don't think, I think we got the money in there. I think we could squeeze that out. I think we'd be safe," then I think, you know, that'd be a good thing.
Right.
Okay?
No, I agree.
But I don't know the finances. We get their report, but she's actually the lady that handles the money.
Right.
We, we have three thousand dollars allocated for the police department every year. But we don't give a bill for our police department. Why don't we use that three thousand dollars that we give for the...
We change a budget at least, department.
We don't know that we're not going to get a bill between now and the end of May.
Did you get a bill last year for the police department?
No, we didn't.
The year before?
Yes.
Last year, was there a budgeted three thousand dollars for the police department?
I don't know off the top of my head what we had in there. I think we had five maybe last year.
And that money went back into the general fund?
It was the fund balance.
There's three thousand dollars right there on the police department that we don't pay, and we're not anticipating them paying.
So, we don't know that.
We haven't got a bill from them in the last two years.
Now we will.
Yeah.
Now we will.
I doubt it. I stay in very close contact with all of this point. Not only the police department, they are very good to us, our municipality.
They give us a lot. They give us a lot.
The whole thing.
I, I think the whole issue here is whether you, as a board, feel we should spend this money for this particular item.
We need to have the money to build, that's, that's...
You know what's in our fund balance. It would be your, your motion to transfer the money to purchase that piece of equipment. But what you've got to remember is, this is not a budgeted item. This was thrown out of the budget in February or March. That's when that purchase rec came up, was for last, for this budget. And you, as a board, decided not to purchase it. You know, you have the right to change your mind. You have the time to transfer the funds. It's your decision. But it has been, I love an answering system. I had no objection to having a nice answering system.
I think the public would, too.
I mean, but it, it's already been rejected by the board, so, you know, we're kind of, it's up to you.
I don't know what the issue is.
Well, we don't solve it down. This one would be coming up again.
We didn't have the money. We're, we're trying to keep our tax rate where it was.
We were trying to keep our tax rate at where we were, that's why. Because we would have been overbudgeted then, then we'd have had to raise the tax rate.
We didn't want to raise it. We cut back. Well, you remember the cutting back.
That's why...
And that's why it was...
That's why it was pushed to the side.
Now, after the fact, if you want to do a fund balance or something, I mean, that's a board decision. But that's what happened originally, I guess.
Right, right.
And as Amy said, if we can cover our tracks for three, four months, put it in next year's budget, June first, pay for it, not have to raise the taxes, that's nice. But if that's not possible, who cares?
So, what you're saying is if we bought this system, we'd have to raise the taxes to cover the costs?
No, I'm not saying...
Not, not necessarily.
I'm saying that if you did it in June, you can't certainly answer that question, but you would make it a priority. You may have to cut somewhere else to do that. But you could also do it right now and take it out of the fund balance, and, you know, as Amy said, you don't know what's going on down the road with the budget. Maybe the van is going to cost a whole lot more.
Maybe the van, that's, that's my, I'm looking to get the van in place.
I do not have a vote.
And it isn't like it's a big expenditure, but it's a decent expenditure.
It doesn't matter. It's, it's the way it is. Money's money, and it's, shopping and paying attention is so important.
Would there be another system out there, Rainey, that wouldn't be as expensive that would serve our needs?
That, I don't know. I think Joe did most of the legwork on this. I'm basing it off from this, and I did talk to him about this. And it is the same system pretty much that Towne and Champlain, Ross's Point, and everybody has, which makes it nice because if somebody calls in for wastewater, you can say, "One moment, please." You push a button and it sends it right over, or a conference call and, and all this type of thing. But, yeah, we're not, Twin Towers here, we're not, but...
We don't have anywhere near the phones that Ross's Point or the town have. We have two people.
Yeah.
See what we're trying to...
It's simplistic.
Well, the thing...
A simple and cheap one, we do that.
But the thing is with this is we are paying a phone bill here, the pump house, the wastewater treatment plant. We're paying all these bills. This is one phone bill. There's no more...
Yeah, we'll maybe there's some that we could...
Right. That's how they think they justify this.
Judge's office.
The judge's office, all that.
If you look at your phone bill receipts every month, I mean, we get like five.
Right.
And we're twenty-five dollar charge minimum just for having a phone in that building.
I think that's how Joe...
I think we get eight, eight, nine bills a month.
A phone bill.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. Is, is that true that that's how they determine the, the return on investment, three years? They said if you, your cost of all these phone bills, depending on your calls, of course.
We roughed out what we could probably save on phone lines and what they would cost per month. And then I just equated that back to what the payback would be for just phone service savings.
Just in the cost of the phone service.
Yeah, just for the service charge alone.
Right, not counting the calls or whatever else.
What if we had the, Amy's suggestion hooked up? Try to get another pool, a cheaper pool, and it would be covered for the month, and maybe we could find a second pool if I, I don't know.
Do you go to their options, were there, Joe? Did you get into that, or they have like a standard package, or do they have different?
Yeah, I could probably, you know, shave a couple hundred off of that somehow. We'll look at their repricing six months ago.
I mean, we're a couple hundred or not.
Two hundred, maybe. Possibly a few hundred savings there. When you can't go to somebody else, I mean, that's like asking AT&amp;T to install a system for spring. I mean, it won't work like that.
Right, yeah, we have to go with the Champlain telephone company.
But could there be another system that, maybe not quite as elaborate, I guess?
Could you go wireless?
Wireless? That's, that's not far away. That's in the future.
It's here right now. It's being done right now in Champlain.
Is it?
Yep. They're working up warehouses right now. Wireless service. And they're bypassing Champlain Village.
Done. There's probably more cost effective.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, I didn't price it.
What do you think, Amy?
I'd like to wait.
I'd like to see how the van's gonna go first, I mean, I'd like to see how our truck's gonna go first, that's, that's my thing, because if we gotta put, I don't think we're gonna get anything decent for it.
And if wireless is coming up, we probably should look at that.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, I don't even know if this is right, because this is a board, but, I'll tell you what, we'll make a deal, I'm a deal maker. I'll get a van in here for such a minimal cost. You, you tell me a number you wanna see it in here under-
Eyes are sparkling.
No, no, but, here, watch this, you wanna save money, you wanna save money, I'll show you, I'll show you, I'll save you some money, some more money, again, okay?
Okay, Monty, bring it on, show me.
Okay, let's make a deal. I get you a van in here. Give me a number that has to be under, that we can make this number work.
A thousand.
Okay, done. And if it's even under that, that's even better, right?
But this van's gotta work.
Yes, inspected, ready to go.
Can you find me one that'll-
No.
Passenger eight people with mileage of twenty-four miles or whatever?
I just picked one from Pennsylvania here, I forget how long ago, for under a grand. One ton, ready, stand up, the whole thing.
Well, there, that issue's settled.
Well, no, I, I've gotta make this fun, because I'm not looking to argue, and I agree with you, it should be a budget running, but we can't keep putting band-aids, we, we need to move forward, we need to-
We haven't band-aided the situation at all, it's just-
Well, it's just an issue that's coming up, and again, and again, and it's, I just wanna put it to bed, I mean, this is getting old news here, it's time to move forward.
Yeah, I'd like to spend next month talking about something else.
As I really wanted that answering machine to work, and trust me, I had meetings, I was down here, I don't know how many times-
We spent a couple hours.
Until I finally figured out, well, it's not gonna work, it doesn't matter what I wanna do, it's not gonna work with this system. Okay, so meanwhile, I make a motion, I'll come in, hook into the, ahead of the thing to save the six bucks a month, meanwhile, by our next board meeting, I should completely have locked into a van. I should have, I wanted to have it ready for this board meeting and it didn't happen. So does that tell you anything with the deal I just made?
Another contribution by Trustee Parker.
Well, no, it's, 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 I'm doing my job, but, no, no, but it's-
You contributed a lot.
I just shopped, that's why I'm in charge of tools and equipment, that's why Val will put me here, just keep an eye and watch that stuff.
I knew you were a man around town, so I said, if a man around town, he can find the deals, okay, that's what I'm looking at. Okay, let's go that way.
All right, so we'll, we'll go that route?
Because I'm thinking, you know, that-
And I'd like to get some information on the wireless system, because we're talking, that is a state-of-the-art feature, and if we're gonna put in this whole new system and we've got wireless knocking on the door, maybe wireless is affordable.
Just around the corner.
Yeah.
Or maybe coming down in price, like what we're saying about computers too, and maybe too far fetched for a year or two.
Exactly. You know, six months.
Joe, how well versed are you when you heard about this warehousing going wireless? Is this something you could follow up on, or give me a little early board?
I just haven't had the time to do it, but it's not hard.
You have plenty of time this month, right?
I'm sure I do.
Because I, I, my opinion is if I can feel comfortable getting a decent van for, for the work crew to do their job, then, you know, I'm all willing for the phone system. I mean, you know, I'm thinking that we really need to, because we need to get our crew around, we need to make it safe to protect our crew as well. And if you can get that in, because I know you're a businessman, you do a lot of business, you know, let's make that happen, and the phone system can probably happen as well. This is what I'm trying to say, not have an enormous amount of money, just make it a nice sensible lump sum, and I think we can do this on a general fund, and I, and I don't think there'll be an argument on any side from anybody.
And we do have a payback.
And there is gonna be a payback.
Full payback, that's right. So in our investment, we are getting our money.
Let's go that way, he's gonna hook before the Trump.
He's gonna hook before the Trump.
Before Trump, to hold us until-
Until we make a decision.
That's right.
Are we gonna fully look at wireless, or are we gonna look through other things?
Well, I, I think, I think, yeah, I think we should look at that, I mean, Joe doesn't have anything to do this month anyway.
I have to look at both.
Right, yeah, absolutely, we know what we have now, see what can be revised on the existing one we have now, and what's the deal with wireless, what, what's available?
And have them come to the board meeting, have that information for our next board meeting. Okay?
But if you can't get them, can at least have the doctor-
I don't think I get them, I'll give you some rough estimates.
Yeah, right.
I'm not sure how cost-effective wireless is right now for our usage, but I'll, I'll look.
We're small enough that I don't know if that'll work.
I don't think that'll help us, because the wireless is international, I think that's more of a broad span.
It's coming, but I think it's too soon for our size, for our size, it might be a little bit too soon.
But, an option again is to look at it.
We need a second on that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, I'm sure I have other things this evening, but I, like I say, I didn't have much time to prep for, I've been out of business a month. That's, that's all I have this evening.
Well, thank you very much.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I'd like to call Executive for Legal Issue. For Executive for Legal.
Report of Quick Treasurer?
I have my monthly report, all details of revenue expenditures as of September thirtieth, which I copy all of you with, questions, any calls, stop in. We just done water sewer billing for the month of October, dated October first, July, August, September, the water figure was forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-seven cents. The sewer figure is seventy-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty cents.
That was your billing?
That was the one for October first, yes. I think you've all been copied with the notice regarding hydrant flushing, Joe's got that scheduled, this is okay with everyone, we'll put this in the paper and-
Right.
Flush hydrants at that point.
Joe, does that match the procedure that we've been doing here for years?
Yes, it is.
The date and the, because I know the procedure that was going on worked well.
April and October, I guess are, are two months, or six months.
We're also gonna put the notice, our yearly notice in the paper regarding parking on the streets, after November first, parking on the streets from two AM to six AM because of plowing. Well, we will not have a Christmas lighting contest this year.
Oh.
NICE Act will not be making contributions to the various municipalities.
Right.
So we won't have that.
So why don't we just have our own contest and just announce a winner, no one has to have a prize, to say, you're the best, and people love going around and looking at people's houses who won. Keep it as a village activity, it doesn't have to be a nice activity.
We could have, you know, but with no monetary value, because we can't do that, you know?
We don't, we don't have a beautification committee to do the judging anymore, it kinda has been groping the last two years to try and judge.
So do the recreation people, whatever that's called, what is that called, but I am on.
Recreation parties, you're, you're in charge, Commissioner of Recreation and Beautification.
You've got Marion on hell that are, you know, in charge of that, and we could get them to go around and judge, I could ask them anyway. I mean, because I, people look forward to that silly thing, I mean, they're little things, but you know, it's cool to have.
Actually, what we've done in the past is, NICE Act would give us X number of dollars, and then we would give certificates from the village, and this year we could just do the certificates, we tied them up here, if you want to get something.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, we have one lady who won first place, and next year she, she won a prize rather than a certificate, and she would rather have a certificate than a prize, because she wanted it to fit in her home.
Well, why don't we-
So if you, if you wanna sponsor that and find some judges, we could do certificates.
First, second, third place?
I think, I mean, because people like us, it's just, it's community, it's just-
Yes, it is. There you go.
What we have to know is when they'll be judging, so that we can advertise in the paper, so they don't know what days.
Once I'm decorated, then they'll judge. And that could be up to the twenty-fourth.
Come on.
You might need to tell people.
Yes, I got you.
I love you too.
No kickbacks from NICE Act for burning extra electricity.
Yeah.
That's what it is, they count how many extension cords you got going.
Okay, that is Mr. Duncan.
Only one other issue, we have a, a letter that came in from Mrs. Potry today regarding, I don't know if it's something you wanna address, or you wanna hold, because, that's been going on for a couple of months, I don't know, have you seen it, have anybody seen it?
Yes, I know.
Second, McQuist, yeah.
I don't know if it's something you wanna address, but I just want to be up here, just saying.
Maybe, without Mr. Connors here, Bobby, we should table this till our next meeting, we just got this correspondence in today anyways. I mean, that, that, that's up to the board.
No, I agree.
I agree.
I think we just got it today, I think we need to review it.
Yep.
And-
I remember a discussion on this, and I gotta review my notes to see where we ended off tonight.
I think we're gonna table this until our, our November meeting, thank you. I think we, I think we all need to get back and figure out what we're gonna do with it before we do that. Is that Miss, it, Miss Duncan?
Thank you.
Okay, Report of Superintendent?
I believe you all have a copy of my report, I apologize for the delinquency, I can add to it today.
Opened a quick scan.
Something major to review that I have for you, I think you've all addressed everything, except for the one issue, I, I don't know what to do with Maiden Lane and Water Street, since the flood of last March, we talked a few months ago about maybe just paving, throwing some stone down and paving it, but that was rejected. That is a turnaround area for us during this winter snow plowing.
Right.
It's in such poor shape now, it really needs to be paved, but I don't know if that's gonna happen this season.
Is there any kind of sub base that we could put down just to get us through this year?
I, I'd like to go ahead and do that, I just have to go back and do some repricing on that, for a sub base, maybe some sealer on it.
Yeah, because we could get some rough coat, I mean, I think we should have it, as much as we could do it, just a good rough coat, just to seal it, excuse it, make it so that we could use it, and then readdress the problem probably next summer, you know, with the top go-
The base under that road was never really-
Very good.
I mean, I, I'm guessing by the washout, it didn't look like there was much of a base to begin with, no?
It's got, almost like they paved right over the top of the dirt.
That's what I thought, there was never really a road built there.
It don't look good. Now, that is a long time ago, that street, so, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I'll put something together next week.
It should be addressed before winter, because if our cloud's gonna turn around there, we want something, the cloud's not gonna pick up and scrape that off, and, and-
Make it that, remember, it's a machine, it's got-
I'm not sure right now what to do.
I'll figure some good look at it, see if you can get some, some kind of zero three quarters, and then throw dust over it, and hope that gets a good freeze to it before-
Right, anything that'll make it good step.
Solid, because you get a wet day, you're gonna peel it right up.
Okay, any other things for our superintendent, Stephen?
It was a good, you had a good detailed report, Mr. Webb, about what we're doing over here on Ashline, or on Pine Street over here, it's really detailed about what's going on. Actually, I forgot to mention earlier that, last month, we did have Mr. Brothers and Susan Jeffmore came in, I've, I've spoken with both of them. And informed them on what we're doing over there, what's going on, how we're, how we're going about what we're supposed to be doing, and so I, I, you know, addressed the issues with them, and kept them updated on what's going on, so they also know what's going on over there.
Good. Well, if there's nothing else for Mrs. Brothers, go on to correspondence.
Item one is correspondence to Gregory Dennon, the Tampa Long Building, the Gregory pairs of the building. Item two is Chip's correspondence relating our capital apportionment balance, which is a thirty-four, I don't know if we've put in for-
Yeah, not been in, yeah, this kinda came in late, but, we just, we got it September sixteenth, they wanted it returned by September thirtieth, is that what it was?
Put in after the fact, Joe, it's still on.
I am calling Jim fourth, I wanna square it with him.
Item three is correspondence from the county health department regarding free chlorine disposal. Item four is correspondence from Douglas Harris regarding a little process point water tank purchase.
Is anybody done, is this still available?
Somebody told me the tank came down, I didn't look.
I, I can't hardly believe it.
I thought they had further-
I'll check into this, I'll check into this first thing in the morning.
That was a verbal commitment to me from, from the superintendent and mayor.
I'll, I'll follow through with this up tomorrow morning, and then find out exactly what's going on with that.
Item five is correspondence to yours, Army Corps of Engineers, regarding the Great Chazy River flooding. Item six is correspondence from NICE Act Solutions regarding the Energy Alliance and Power Supply Agreement.
That was supposed to be the date.
We have to make a decision on that this evening, and I have to sign approved by the board, signed by the mayor, and I have an extension on this, explaining our meeting until tonight to Mr. Shaker, and he said he would accept it for the next couple of days.
Well, I think we've done quite well with the initial plan that we've set up.
Wasn't the NICE Act Solutions, didn't we have a company come in to audit our bills or something, and was it NICE Act Solutions in there, where we ended up getting a rebate check, and they kept half of it for the consulting fees or whatever?
I don't think it was NICE Act Solutions.
That was for, I think, the street lighting.
NICE Act, NICE Act Solutions.
Yeah, they cut the percentage of it.
This is a steam contract they had last year.
Right.
Well, you've got two choices, you've got the current plan, or just a variable price, or you've got the, what they say is the increased savings, which is a fixed price, you've got two options on the cover, and a cover letter, let me pull. And there's a form that has to be signed by the mayor, and your choice of- And you wish to have.
Joe, have you had a chance to review this?
I've reviewed it, it looked like NICE Act Solution was offering the better savings plan. I don't have a right of chance that way to-
Well, it's, with NICE Act Solutions, it's just two different rates, two different plans, it's the days.
This is all NICE Act-
It's all variable price.
You have a fixed price and a variable price.
Right.
One, the one that we're on now is a four percent, that's the, the variable option.
Right.
If we go to the fix, they'll, they're estimating, you know, up to twelve percent, so-
Yeah, and I see, I mean-
Save four percent savings, or twelve percent saving?
If we save twelve percent on the amount of money, let's see, then we might be able to get the phone system here.
Well, did you say the cost of our electric for a month?
That's a deal's amazing.
NICE Act, four, five, six-
Forty-five percent.
Seven, eight.
It's been a lot for a month.
Everybody does.
A little over eight hundred.
We gotta pay attention, reason is because everybody's, you see that, no?
No more.
Even your home.
Yeah, I'll be asked again, I don't have time to make any calls on it.
Thirty-five.
But I mean, you know, you're showing, estimated up to twelve percent, price is guaranteed to be six percent less than the NICE Act fix rate.
Thirty-six hundred for NICE Act, that's fine.
I mean, who's, who's gonna check that every month?
Price plus forty-five percent. When do they need to know this, bud?
See, the, the deadline, when I copied that one, I put on here, wrote the deadline, but I did call for an extension.
Right, and that extension is a couple days?
He said it was a couple days, yeah, gave me a fax number, and said, I told him we would decide to make it.
So we gamble and roll with the twelve percent, it's four hundred and thirty-two savings a month. Versus a hundred and forty-four, and get your phone system faster.
Phone system's dumb, that's dumb, you made the deal, that's dumb.
Two hundred and eighty-eight dollars more savings a month by rolling the dice, I say we go for it. You know, they rolled out that program before, and it has proven to be a cost savings, I mean, we started off, we've gotten the four percent savings over what we were. I know at my home, I've saved over a hundred dollars a month since the new systems.
If I'm reading it right.
You know, you gotta be careful with this stuff, because I, I've seen times where, yeah, sure, you know, you can go on their, their estimated plan, estimate, estimated up to twelve percent. Guaranteed to be six percent less, providing you don't have any spikes or surges, what's the clause into that? What kind of penalties or charges are you gonna pay for that?
It is a gamble. It's like stocks.
Be a Philadelphia lawyer, you know, to fill it out, so.
Right, that's the thing. We've had good results with the one that we've wished.
And we're on the variable plan now.
And we're on the variable plan, so.
Whatever the market is, you have forty-five percent, that's our cost, is what they're saying, which is about a four percent savings compared to being on, on a regular thing, now, the other one says, based on our history, you know? But, it doesn't say anything about going over.
Yeah, I, I have a problem with gambling. It's too hard to come by to, to take a chance with-
You know, the fixed price is, is, is the option, but not necessarily, yeah, you get the fix right, if you never go over your usage, and if we run into that situation, what's the penalties to it, how much did you actually save, you see what I mean?
See, I did, we did well with a variable.
You know, we might be better to stay variable, because if, if that's what the market is, that's what the market is, we're gonna pay our percentage over, and not worry about penalties and, and whatever, we're, we're paying off what it is, I would think.
Right.
Staying just the way we are.
And we did save with that, so.
Yeah, it shows that we saved four percent.
Yeah. So do you think that we should probably stay with the, with the horse we're already riding?
I, I feel comfortable with, with that, I really-
Not, not being confident either way, I, I think we'd be better to stay where we are, I mean, you'd have to be part lawyer here to sit here and really know what you're talking about, you know, and I-
I think they treated us well with that, so I-
I haven't had the time to really try to figure this out.
I mean, to prove it out.
I do understand they're in business, and they're not there to put it to anybody, but we have to, I think we'd better stay where we are, on my own page, so.
Trustee Parker?
I say we stay with the variable plan, I just don't feel comfortable gambling, especially with taxpayers.
Trustee Parker?
I agree, I think we, it looks like a bigger savings, but we don't know that.
It's proven itself over this year, so I think-
Let, let's stay with it. What do you think, Amy?
I, I always go for the better savings.
Throw the dice.
I throw the dice, seems to work. That's just my opinion.
Well, I think I'm gonna stick with the variable, so I think we'll, I'll sign the appropriate paperwork and, uh-
I can give this to you right now, so I can pass it in the morning, I've got it all filled out.
Yeah.
Third sheet, give me.
I think we're gonna do that and be done. I just signed above, right?
Yeah, for the, for the, it's in your name, and I signed above that.
Sign at one spot, bring it back.
Just check the right box.
Oh, that's a trick.
Thank you.
Then you may, and there, we can just, I see, so.
Item seven is correspondence to town supervisor wallet regarding termination of the sewer service to Parker Shepherd Way and Champlain National Bank, and you also have an attachment from Superintendent Webb, in my opinion, Mr. Peter.
Discuss this on executive?
Yes.
Or no, I guess, we didn't need to, right?
We got, we got correspondence coming on this from our county.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
We got correspondence coming on it from our county. Okay?
Item eight is correspondence and revised water sewer contract to town supervisor wallet, and if you put it back on that, Joe?
No, I have not.
Is that what the, the, our water sewer contract is, is contemplating the addition of District Number Five?
District Number Five.
I did not include District Five in the contract, and I explained to him until I had the proper paperwork, I couldn't put it in the contract.
Is that what-
I told him it could always be amended later.
So he's kinda holding his signature or their approval, thinking that we can add that, or no? Do, do we have their contract back?
No, we do not.
Should we send them a letter, asking them to expedite it, or?
I do have a call-in to Bruce, but I'll speak with him by tomorrow.
This is set out September twenty-fourth, with the changes.
Probably in a week.
Right. But the, he was aware of the changes before they were made, and he just has to look, yeah, the changes are there, done.
That's correct.
So you do have a call-in to him?
Yes, I did, I called him this morning, hoping to get an update before the meeting.
Can you add to your list to call him again, or, or continue following up with that?
On my list.
Excellent.
We should get that contract back, I mean, it's been-
Can you let me know, keep me updated on the status of that?
Sure. Sure.
Excellent.
Both you and Chuck know.
Excellent, thank you.
Item nine is subpoena relative to asbestos at one hundred Walnut Street. She has chosen those tracks and then there's more correspondence from Attorney Kiebel. I had followed up on what Mr. Kiebel asked and that was responded to in the morning. Excellent. Item ten is correspondence from Attorney Kiebel regarding village relevance using village property for non-governmental purposes. I had offered the property as I was told by the board to Mrs. Valensi. She chose not to use the property for the garage sale, which was great because this came after the fact, so we would have done something.
Well, I think that...
That explains the issue that we were asking.
But no, well, I'm not sure that. When I read this, in my interpretation, it says, "You requested that I provide the trustee with my legal opinion as to whether or not the trustee has the right to authorize it." It wasn't the trustee, it was a board decision.
Trustee, all is the difference.
Well, no, I guess what I'm saying is, I agree, no single trustee should be able to say, "Hey, Mrs. Jones, go ahead and do what you want." It has to be by the board.
We can't, we don't have before you do that to say they can use our property. That's what he's saying, in his opinion.
No, no. In his opinion, no trustee. You don't have the right to go down the street.
It's just trustees.
Us as a board, we don't, yeah. That's how I interpreted it.
You're requesting that prior to the trustees, my legal opinion, as to whether or not trustees have the right to authorize, trustees meaning any one of us, I'm thinking.
Well, when I asked him the question, it was presented as a board.
My question with this one is, if we can only use village property for governmental use, then how can, how are we able to use village property if we want to put up a skating rink or a...
Playground, baseball field, anything that...
Or anything, so we can do that.
I think they, I think he means trustee.
You can, if you have insurance to cover it. And that's what we were talking about last month. You can just go to your agent and say, "If this garage sale is going to go on our property, we would just be sure our agent would say we're covered." Now, when you go to a skating rink or something outside, you're gonna have to go back to your insurance company and see what, you know, what the liability is and what you would need to cover it to.
Yeah, but he's saying here, New York State law authorizes a resident or residents to use village real or personal property for non-governmental purposes. So he's saying that if it's a non-governmental purpose, we're not allowed to use village property.
Insurance or no insurance, right.
That's what he's saying. I don't see how that's...
That's a gray area here because that doesn't make sense to me either. That's what caught me on.
Can we get clarification on this? Because, I mean, if you want, let him, I mean, maybe we should let our attorney know. We are planning this winter to have a skating rink on village property. Are we gonna be able to do this? Not insurance issues, but is he saying that we can't use government property?
Unless it's a government skating party.
But it is. We're saying it's an activity that we're sponsoring, the village is sponsoring, so it's technically a government activity. Not someone else using that for a garage sale. It has nothing to do with us, but this is something that we as a community are sponsoring for our community.
Right. No different than anything else. You see what I mean? Shizzi has a skating rink. Peru has a big park.
Right, right. What I'm saying is that we're sponsoring it, so it's considered a governmental activity where this woman using our property to have a garage sale, we're not having anything to do with that.
But I think our intent was to sponsor that person's activity as a village-wide garage sale. Us as a government says we have this space, we are willing to let you use it. I mean, I don't wanna tear this all apart here, but it doesn't make sense, I guess is what I'm saying. And in the long run, how can a board, I agree, one trustee shouldn't have the power to say, "Hey, just go ahead and do what you want," but if the board makes a decision about village property, that holds a lot of weight. I mean, you know?
I think he's alluding to the liability, the whole thing, I'm not...
He should have put liability, he should have put insurance in.
Well, so we'll ask him to clarify, you know? So does this mean like if we want to have an ice skating rink, we can't?
We went through this whole thing with the skateboard.
Oh, I did, and it was...
Francis McCall, he worked hours and hours and hours in work. And it's just a gray area. It's difficult. And as I said, each issue is really different. You just don't make a general, each event is different, you know, you don't just make a general statement.
Well, this is something that we should think on because now we've got the time to do it. We've got a forewarning. If we plan on doing a skating rink this winter for the public.
We need to talk to all these points. How are they doing it? How's Shizzi doing it?
And maybe we should talk to our insurance carriers to see what is our liability? Is there gonna be a major cost? Do we have to submit forms that say that if I'm...
Maybe one sign up there, no liability.
Yeah, right. We should start checking on that if we wanna do this this winter. It gives us a couple of months ahead of time to do this, clarify.
So where are we going with this?
If we get clarification from Mr. Kiebel.
You wanted to refer to skating?
Why don't you just specifically say skating rink? Because, I mean, that's what we're, is that, does the board agree that's where we're headed?
Probably, or unless it's...
Janice, it probably won't be about it here. Just run that by him. In your letter that we received, is that stating an individual trustee or the board of trustees as a decision? You know what I mean?
You know, in our conversation, we're talking about a board decision, so I wouldn't be terrified.
That part just doesn't make sense to me. You know what I mean?
It would be a board decision, yeah.
A board decision would have more weight than...
If we're gonna go ahead and contact the attorney, why don't we also contact our insurance carrier to see what precautions or what liabilities we would have to, how would we protect ourselves from allowing or offering this to the public without putting ourselves or the taxpayers in any harm?
They take a sign saying, enter at your own risk.
Right, or somebody might have to sign a waiver or a public law. Thank you.
Sliding through this.
Same here, sir.
Correspondence of scheduled training seminars from the Flatrate North County Chamber of Commerce. Follow this draft generic environmental impact statement from the statewide wireless network for state office work technologies. Item fifteen is correspondence from Attorney Kiebel to the county regarding amending our zoning law. We have the whole packet here. It's just a matter of waiting for approval now. And that's all for correspondence.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Before we get off, the subject, correspondence number four, the one about the village Ross's Point Water Tower. Like I said, I didn't have much time to review this stuff, but it does say that if the village of Champlain has any interest in acquiring or salvaging this tank, please let this company know. Apparently, you've talked to these people.
I spoke with Doug Ferris on that and a half dozen other issues, just because he provides certain consulting and engineering and proposal preparation. And it was, it was just one issue I discussed with him, so we addressed that in his letter.
Is this something that we could write back to or find out about or leave it dead until we find out the tower still stands?
It was Paul Ross's point. I don't know.
And Paul, you said you were gonna follow up?
I'll be on this first thing in the morning. First, without you, I'll drive by and make sure the tower's gone first.
Yeah, leave that out.
And then follow through. But I'll, I can let you and I'll let Joe know in the morning if the board wants to know. We can put something in the mailbox, but I'll figure out exactly where we stand with this.
I mean, I followed that thing since day one. I've been tracking it. I've been touching base. That, the belt filter press, we'll waste water on that. And maybe it is gone, but it's something that happened awful quick.
Well, it'd definitely be something an asset to the village. I mean, if we're, as we're planning for the future and as we're planning for future projects with border expansion and Northeastern Clinton Central, and then, of course, we've already got a problem on Prospect where people are having to use pumps to pump their water and so, you know...
Just the school alone, we need something.
Right.
With your pumps or the tower.
So this is definitely, and it's by far, you know, Ross's Point's upgrading of their water tank can actually be a plus for us because, you know, we're able to pick this up at, I mean, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar tank, you know, for...
Ten, twenty thousand, the cost of moving the...
Yeah, yeah. So this would really be an asset to the village for future projects. And in your future project, we've got a border expansion coming up next year. And we should, we have to be prepared for that.
That's something, that's something we need to cover if we're planning on it.
Okay, on to old business. Go on town and water sewer districts. We're waiting for some information on that. Town water sewer contracts. We're waiting for paperwork on that. Purchase policy. Waiting on that. Zoning laws.
That was addressed. Correspondence thirteen.
Heating cost reduction in office garage.
Superintendent Webb's already started on this, right?
I have. I have some materials to start on that.
Building materials here and there.
It's just scheduling right now between manpower.
Yeah. I've also, trustee Boyer and myself have been looking at this issue. Boy, we've really got, in this year, everybody predicting our fuel costs going sky high this year like everything else. This year is gonna be, it could really slam us. You know, I figured out last year that it costs us about seven grand a year just to heat this building. So with the fuel prices expecting to double, we could be looking at fourteen thousand dollars just to heat this building, which is way, way too much. I mean, we've got, we've got holes in the ceiling out there, the...
Them holes have been there for more than just this year.
Oh, yeah.
So I think...
And the way the door's set.
I think trustee Boyer and I will probably continue on this if you don't mind working with Rainey. I know you're, and try to come up with a resolution, how we can...
I think we go partial start on it. It's how to do it cost effectively.
Exactly.
Get the worst of it and then to make it a hundred percent's gonna take time.
Well, no, I don't think we'll get it a hundred percent, but if we can just reduce our costs and make it more efficient, then we're definitely ahead of the game.
Number six, Parks Grant.
That's not really...
It's rumored, but we're still in paperwork. I haven't really, I haven't had time this last month to finalize some of the paperwork.
Number seven, Conley Insurance Claim.
I've got that for executive session.
Right. Survey from Clinton County Health Department.
It's something due October fifteenth. I'll fill out.
Okay. NCCS Elementary School.
Still in progress.
Okay.
A lot of work to do.
Does anybody have any new business to come before the board's meeting? If not, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I think it's for...
Salute.
Amy, second.
Motion to go into executive session.
Can we do the...
Motion to go into executive session by Amy, seconded by Rainey Boyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, before we do that...
Thanks for coming, Jim.
See you, Jim.
Welcome anytime.
Have a good night.